She was happy.
Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the June 23, 2025, Tuolton City Council Work Session. The first item on our agenda tonight is the Clackamas County Land Suitability Assessment. Discussion will be led by Steve Koper. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's always good to be here. Excuse me, I'm a little plugged up still. But I will be here to present the Clackamas County Land Suitability Assessment is the current name for it. It was previously called Capacity Analysis, but here we are. Thank you, Bates. So just a little bit of background, I think you all probably remember this, but in case you don't, in 2024, Clackamas County approached cities in Clackamas County, us, Westland, Lake Oswego, Oregon City, and Happy Valley to discuss this project called Land Suitability Assessment. And so on the map on the right here, what you see is the cities that I mentioned in the tan color. And then the blue color are urban reserves, and then the green color are rural reserves. And then things outside of that are just beyond either urban or rural reserves. And so the reason why I'm showing the map is that the county's goal was to look at particularly the urban reserves, the blue colored areas, to help determine whether or not and to what extent land within those areas is suitable potentially for future development. They also were interested in looking at lands already within the urban growth boundary that were rurally zoned and had not yet converted into an urban zone and to try to help understand why that is. Those lands are not really in Tuolton's area, but they're more so in Happy Valley, former Damascus area. A little bit more on background, so specific to Tuolton, Westland, Lake Oswego, the Stafford Urban Reserve, so identified here again in the blue, that label that says Proposed Project Area is just, it's from a map not specific to Clackamas County's project. It's just referring to the area that would have been considered for inclusion in the UGB around the time of the five-party and three-party IGA. So I just want to be clear that Clackamas County is not promoting a map identifying this area. They did, however, suggest that the area of urban reserves adjacent to our cities could be considered in their land suitability assessment. And based on the first draft of the scope of work that they had created, the city is uniformly pushed back and said, "This really sounds like concept planning. You're getting pretty deep into the weeds in looking at suitability. This isn't very high level." As a result, Clackamas County revised their scope of work in response. And so you have that new revised draft scope of work attached to the materials in the packet tonight. And so the city staff, staff of all the cities have reviewed those materials. And the county is asking the cities for a letter of support to Metro, which is part of their ask for a 2040 Planning and Development Grant. It's something that I think has historically been considered requisite by Metro as part of those grants in the past, that they have letters of support from the city. Looking at the draft scope, so kind of long story short, city staff has looked at it and believes that it has been pulled back from the previous scope and does not represent concept planning before. I'm not going to walk through all of the steps here, but it's also in, this is a high-level summary of the draft scope, which again you have in the packet. The particular items that I'd call your attention to are Task Three, which is the serviceability analysis. That's a little bit of a tongue twister. And so that is the high-level look. That's not concept planning, but it is helpful information to understand, like what is the status or possible status of, you know, very basic infrastructure, roads and pipes and things like that? And then what would be constraints of providing that type of services, urban services? And then Task Four, which is the pilot analysis areas. And so this is the county suggesting that they could, as part of the scope of the grant, include up to three areas for a more detailed analysis. And so, you know, I think that there's been some interest seemingly from Wilsonville in studying areas in their part of the city, and then particularly Happy Valley, I think, is most interested in that detailed serviceability analysis. And so that's a little bit of a decision point for you as council to make, and I'll get to that on the next slide. So what we have is, again, revised scope of work in response to a pushback that the previous scope of work constituted or could constitute concept planning. This would have been, you know, I think in violation of the, particularly the three-party IGA, but also to some extent the five-party IGA, which talked about cities being the one in control of concept planning, not just how and when the cities would do it. So again, this pilot areas, the Task Four, gives the county the option to study an urban reserve, which could include Stafford. It could not. And so we're here to seek direction from the council, both as to whether or not the council supports signing on to a letter of support and specifically whether or not the council wants to proactively, in this letter of support, state that they do not want the Stafford area adjacent to our boundary to be part of the pilot areas, or whether or not we would stay mum on that particular issue, a letter of support. And then the county has committed that they would only move forward with an area of urban reserve being included as part of the pilot project with the support of cities. And so the question is again twofold. One, is there support from the council to sign on to the letter of support? Two, does the council feel like there's a need to proactively say, "We, as a body, do not support and will not in the future support the inclusion of the Stafford Urban Reserve as a potential pilot area?" And so that is the extent of my presentation. Pretty short and sweet, but happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Questions for Steve. Council President Pratt.
How much is the amount of the grant that Clackamas County is asking for?
I don't know that they've said what the total amount is at this point. It's in the hundreds of thousands.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I guess this isn't really a question, but it's more of a statement that, like you said, Happy Valley, they have, Happy Valley itself in the UGB has over 1,100 acres. And then just to the east of them, that Pleasant Valley has got over 2,700 acres. The mayor, Ellis, from Happy Valley is constantly just about screaming that he wants to develop that. And then I'm going to, I want to read something really quick, sorry. But this is from the Clackamas County website, it says, "Our findings suggest that some cities in Clackamas County have expended their UGBs without fully exploring the development of the potential land already within the boundaries. This expansion approach undermines the core principle behind UGB and poses a risk to the integrity of rural areas and valuable natural resources." So I guess in my opinion, I'm not understanding why they're not limiting this to the UGBs instead of going into the reserves. We know that, like, Stafford area, the three-party IGA means the expansion of that third lane on 205. So that's not going to happen anytime soon. I know, like, the city did a study of that area many years ago, and it got put on a shelf. And I get that. And I've been told, "Oh, there's money available." Well, that's great, but it's still, to me, a waste of taxpayers' dollars to do a study for something that's not going to likely be used.
Other questions, comments? All right, discussion. Steve had two questions. One was about signing on to a letter of support for the study. And the second question is if we do want to do the letter of support, do you expressly state that you want to make sure that the Stafford Urban Reserve area is not part of the pilot projects? So we'll take the first one on first. So is there support for the city of Tuolton signing on with a support letter for the study for the Clackamas County so they can get the grant money for Metro? Councilor Reyes.
It doesn't affect us in any way to support them. And I mean, that doesn't mean we want them to develop. Stafford, it's just me supporting them, which makes us, shows goodwill and neighborhood and being good neighbors to the city. And I'm not opposed to that. And we have part of Clackamas County in the city of Tuolton, so.
You okay with, Councilor Gonzalez?
I would agree with that as well. There's been a lot of conversations in the last 20 years around that location, and I don't see why it wouldn't hurt just to look to the future as we're always looking 25 years out. This would not affect anything. So I would be in support of that.
President Pratt.
Well, I just want to reiterate, I know Lake Oswego did not vote for this. And it, to me, it's a waste of taxpayer dollars to do this when it's not likely to be used. And, you know, and every time it goes out more than five years, a new study has to be done. So I'm adamantly opposed to it.
So I've got one, two, three, four, five in support, one no. So what about the part of, you know, specifically citing that we will not support the Stafford Urban Reserve being a pilot area? Do you want to stay mum on it for now or include it?
Stay mum on it for now.
Seriously?
Oh, I think that needs to be.
I think it needs to be included. I think it needs to be very clear, Mike.
Okay, Councilor Reyes.
Define mum.
So in that letter of support, we would not say that we'd want the Stafford Urban Reserve area not to be included in a potential pilot area, because Clackamas County said that they would not select an area unless the surrounding cities want it. But Councilor Hutter says, "No," she wants, you know, specifically said from the get-go, "you have her support on the study, but not a pilot area cannot be the Stafford Urban Reserve."
Can I modify it to something that says, "No, but we'll consider if they come to us," or something like that? Or is that just too much wording? So like, I don't want to say no, but then if they have something good that they can present to us, and then we may change our minds. I don't know. So that would be my statement.
Councilor Brooks.
My big concern is that right now there's no financing for traffic or roads. And the community of Tuolton is already very stressed under the project that we're asking for federal funding for on 65th. So in my mind, it's a waste of money until our federal budget gets bright side up. And I would never vote for this right now, in this moment. I think it's just completely, it was somebody's political agenda, and it doesn't have anything to do with what we really want or what our community has said that they want. So, and if we had to do it, then of course I would want to specifically call out Stafford as, we just don't even have the money for the infrastructure. We don't have the roads to support it. I mean, the whole thing is, until we actually have federal funding for roads, I think the whole thing is wasting people's money at a time that we really can't afford to do that. I hope people consider that.
Councilor Gonzalez.
I think that we've got to have information. Things change so fast. There's no money now, there's money later. If we are concerned about the budget, then there's other programs we could cut. So I would say that information is fruitful, and it wouldn't hurt. So I would be in support.
Council President Pratt.
I just want to remind everybody that there's a three-party and five-party IGA that says this area cannot be developed until there is funding and the project, the I-205 expansion is going forward. So this is not likely to happen anytime in the near future. And once again, it will just, it will require a new study by the time it gets there.
So it looks like we have a majority for the letter, and we're about half-half on specifically citing the Stafford Urban Reserve as a hands-off, if you will, for a pilot project. Would the happy median be that we do the letter and do cite that we would not support the Stafford Urban Reserve as a pilot area? Would that satisfy the majority? Seeing non-heads? Yes, okay. Okay. Looks like it's five to two. All right. Do you have what you need, Steve?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
All right. That brings us to, my mouse is not cooperating. Next up is the Washington County Cooperative Library System Funding and Governance Update. Jerian Thompson, welcome, Jerian.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. How are you all? Jerian Thompson, Tuolton Library Director and Equity and Inclusion Officer for the city. And I'm very happy to be here tonight to give you guys an update about the funding and governance project for libraries. So a little bit of background first. Washington County Cooperative Library Services, or WCCLS, is a partnership among nine municipalities, including Tuolton, three nonprofits, and Washington County. This partnership is coordinated through the Executive Board and the Policy Group. These two groups have been working together since spring 2024. That fits with the day I've had. As I was saying, we've been working since spring 2024 on a project to evaluate public library services, funding, and governance in Washington County. The urgency of this project is driven by the budget challenges that Washington County has faced in recent years, and Marina and Company is the consultants on the project. Yeah. Good? Okay. The project has two goals, which you can see on the screen. The first phase of the project involved assessing the cooperative's current state, and that report was issued in November. The second phase focused on near-term funding needs and defining base service levels for libraries. A report issued in January includes those base service levels. We also looked at efficiency opportunities and identified centralized collection management for libraries, which I'll discuss in a few more slides. The current phase, which I'm here to give you an update about tonight, includes defining each library's service area and service population, developing a new funding allocation methodology, and beginning to work on governance improvements. And the reports that I've referenced here are available on wccls.org. To determine each library's service population, the entire county is divided into library service areas. This map shows the proposed service area for Tuolton in green. In the current phase, we've been evaluating the boundaries for the area to be served by each library. The number of people inside the service area equals the library's service population. This metric is a data point that is used by all public libraries, and we are required to report it to the state library annually. It is likely to be a component of the new funding allocation methodology. Service boundaries would be drawn using voter precincts to ensure alignment with municipal boundaries. Tuolton's proposed service area would include Durham, the portion of Wilsonville that is in Washington County, and a few unincorporated areas to the southeast and north of us. We would be responsible for providing library services to those areas, including outreach to schools. The Basalt Creek area that is shown in orange on the lower left of the map is currently allocated to Sherwood and will join Tuolton as that area is annexed into the city. The proposed service population for our library would be about 31,000 people. I do want to note that this portion of, this service area does not include a portion of Tuolton, which is in Clackamas County, because this is the Washington County service, or library services. It only includes the Washington County parts in our service area. The part of Tuolton that's in Clackamas County counts for Lake Oswego's service area. Another aspect that we've been working on is the new funding allocation methodology. Our current funding allocation is not something we can explain. It's best described as sedimentary layers, built over time. All partners agree that it is time to update the methodology to develop a clear, transparent, and explainable formula. The Washington County Library System is unique, and there is no model for us to follow in developing this methodology. Service population is a key factor that's under consideration for the methodology. The current methodology that's proposed includes a calculation for determining a number of full-time equivalent, or FTE, employees for each library to provide the defined base services. That number of FTE would then be multiplied by a dollar amount that represents a cooperative-wide average for direct costs. A third element is a factor related to facility square footage for the nonprofit library associations. The nonprofit libraries do not have a taxing entity that can provide for indirect costs, such as facility maintenance, improvements, utilities, or even rent for leased spaces. The nonprofits rely on the county for the majority of their funding, which is supplemented by local fundraising. Through these funding factors, which have not been finalized, the county seeks to address library service consistency. This chart shows how funding could be redistributed using the methodology currently under consideration. However, this is likely to change. This is not final. Want to be clear about that. At the Washington County Board of Commissioners Work Session that was held on June 10, commissioners gave direction to county staff to do no harm with the funding methodology changes and to work with partners, organizations, to develop mutually agreeable solutions. Based on the proposed service population and the draft funding methodology, the county would pay for approximately 15 FTE at Tuolton. We currently employ 20.5 FTE, including represented and management personnel and temporary staff. I also would like to address the plan to centralize collection management. Collection management is an area of professional expertise for me. It's something I've been doing as part of my job throughout my career in public libraries. And before I came to Tuolton, the position that I held in my previous library system was as collection coordinator, and I implemented centralized collection management for a system of four branches in a bookmobile. During this evaluation process, our group of library directors, city managers, and nonprofit leaders considered possible ways to gain efficiencies and reduce costs. Centralized collection management was the only significant opportunity. It is projected to save money across countywide library operations. That savings would primarily come through eliminating staff positions at the local library level. While it is true that efficiencies will be gained through centralization, it's important to me to weigh those gains against potential costs. One risk is the loss of our collection's current community focus. In spite of all that public libraries do and have become these days, it is still our books, our collection, that people think of first when they think of libraries. Last fall, WCCLS surveyed 18,000 library users. The results of that survey showed that library users value their local library's collection most. More than technology, more than programming, more than anything else. It's the collection. This was true for Tuolton patrons, and it echoes what we have heard in our own user surveys. I know from my experience, there are a variety of ways in which a system can approach centralization. The approach that WCCLS has taken thus far risks that loss of local focus in our collection. Another cost I must acknowledge is the impact on our staff. Selecting items for the collection is an enjoyed and treasured part of each Tuolton librarian's job. We will feel this loss keenly, and I say "we" because I do collection development for the library, too. Selecting books is one of the ways that our librarians develop deep familiarity with our collection, allowing us to make the best reading suggestions to library patrons. As we make this transition, we must ensure that we have ways to maintain this high-quality customer service that familiarity generates. We are asking for a more collaborative approach to planning and implementing this transition, including slowing down if need be. This is the biggest operational change that WCCLS has taken in its nearly 50-year history. It is important that we get this right and not rush just with the hope of saving a few dollars. To sum up, centralized collection management and county funding to provide base services are part of the financial projections for cooperative library services across the next levy cycle. This chart shows these costs in the light green shading in the background, with the blue bars representing county revenues, including a continued contribution from the Washington County General Fund and a 37-cent local option levy. This chart does not reflect indirect costs or other local library costs that are not funded through the county. The Washington County Board of Commissioners has been planning for the next local option levy ballot measure scheduled for this November. The current levy, at a rate of 22 cents per $1,000 of assessed value, provides 45% of WCCLS's current budget and expires in June 2026. And we're working with county staff to schedule a presentation from the county about the levies later this summer. Tomorrow, the board will hold public hearings for both the library levy and the public safety levy with the proposed rates shown here. The library levy would be to maintain current service levels. The financial projections in the library levy proposal show that the future funding ratio will be nearly 2/3 from the local option levy and 1/3 from the Washington County General Fund. Given the amount of funding that the levy will contribute to countywide library services, it is essential for us that this levy pass. And I can say that because the ballot language has not been adopted yet. As a public employee, I can't advocate for ballot measures. In the next fiscal year, which is the final year of the current levy, levy funds will account for about 30% of Tuolton library's revenues. Earlier this month, Washington County Commissioner Jason Snyder came to your work session. I sincerely thank you for your comments and your questions that you shared in support of Tuolton Library and asking about how equity was going to be included in this process. Commissioner Snyder had your comments front of mind the next day when the board received a presentation from WCCLS about the project. There are additional meetings planned for city managers and library leaders this summer as we refine the funding methodology and begin discussing governance changes, the agreements that we sign to do our work together. Our next decision point on those topics is planned for late September. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thanks, Jerian. Questions for Jerian? That's for Sacco.
Was there, thank you for your presentation, Mayor. Was there any definition provided of do no harm? And what do they mean by that?
Yeah, you know, what I took away from that discussion was some, under the current, not final, methodology, some libraries are projected to receive an increase, some a substantial increase, and some are projected to receive less. And that's the part they want to manage, is the ones that would be potentially receiving less. I don't remember who said it, but somebody said, "I don't want to see any library go into the red" with the county, basically. They do also want to manage the proposed large increases because no library can go from here to here with a light switch flip, right? So it is looking at both ends and making sure that we are, we're being reasonable in how we approach this, but they did not give more specific direction than that. And I don't know if Sherrilyn has any additional insight she can offer, but.
Okay. And as somebody who's never worked in a library, can you help me understand how the centralized collection equates to saving money? And I have a general idea, but I just want to make sure that I'm making that connection.
So when you look at this chart with the basic expenses, including.
So, when you look at this chart with the basic expenses, uh, including centralized collections, that's kind of pulling together, uh, synthesizing a lot of analysis that the consultant has done. They had each of the libraries, um, do some estimating about if we centralized collections, what would the impact to your library be in terms of potential redundancies? Um, and then using that information, um, compiled together with some additional information from the county, uh, they came up with a dollar amount that they estimate that they can save. Primarily, though, it, the, the reason that the savings would be realized is each library has staff that select books, order the books, get them into the catalog, and get them out the door. And so that work is duplicated across all of our libraries. If that work is being done centrally, we don't need that, those positions at the local level unless there is local, uh, collection management and cataloging work that, that needs to be done. Uh, the assumption from the county is that that would not be needed, and therefore those staffing positions would not be needed, and that's where the majority of the savings would come from.
To overhead costs, basically?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and if, if for whatever reason, um, you know, we, we had to go that way, if that was what was decided, is there any opportunity to have some sort of collaborative committee or even community involvement, um, to make sure that, you know, that we are representing our community within our library and our, our collection?
We have not started, uh, formally planning the process yet for how this transition will work. WCCLS plans to issue an RFP later this year to hire a consultant to help us with that transition process. So far, uh, the county, uh, WCCLS staff has committed to providing mechanisms for local libraries to give input, which would be, uh, both sharing specific suggestions or requests, "We would like this specific title," as well as "We would like," you know, more general, "more books on this topic," or "fewer books on this topic." Uh, but we don't know specifically what those mechanisms would be yet. It does not seem likely that there would be, um, a committee-type approach that would reduce the efficiency that, the efficiency gains that, uh, would come with, with centralizing.
Other questions? Councilor Brooks, and then Counselor Reyes.
Um, thank you for your presentation, and, um, sorry that it's been a tough day. Uh, I, um, there's a couple of things that come to mind for me that I, questions about. First of all, when, um, Commissioner Snyder was here, he mentioned a concept that I didn't quite understand around, um, like, costs that are carried costs, was it, or?
The indirect costs.
Indirect costs, yeah.
Yeah.
Can you explain more about what he was talking about?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. So, for, um, for those libraries that are part of municipality like us, um, we have the direct costs that we pay for out of our budget, and then there are indirect costs, which are basically, um, costs paid by other parts of the city, including, um, resources. So, when I go to Kevin for legal advice on library policy, that's an indirect cost. He's providing an indirect service. In some cities, um, the libraries actually contribute money back to the general fund. They have to charge back, or they get, uh, they get charged for those indirect costs. Some libraries track the costs and, uh, but they don't directly pay them. Uh, so we have indirect costs as well, which would include, uh, those other departments, but it also includes most of our facility costs, including utilities, HVAC repairs, all that stuff comes out of the facilities and maintenance budget. Um, so that's an indirect cost for us. Um, and that indirect cost can vary from city to city. As going through this project, because we in Tuolatin had not previously tracked the indirect costs, I worked with Dawn in finance to develop a reasonable estimate for what our indirect costs were, so that the consultant was doing an apples-to-apples comparison in all of those financial analysis. And it is something that we're going to start tracking and including in our annual report to the state library.
Okay. So, that's just part of the organizational costs, because the way that was presented seemed kind of interesting to me. But I think with my background in grants and stuff like that, managers would want to utilize indirect costs and, yeah. Okay, so the other, um, that was just, the other question I had was, you talked about nonprofit libraries, can you just give me an example or two of?
Yeah, we have three nonprofit associations, which are Cedar Mill Library, Aloha Library, and Garden Home. And Garden Home is taking over operations for West Slope, which has previously been operated by the county. So, Garden Home will have two locations, uh, Cedar Mill has two locations, and Aloha. Those are each in unincorporated areas of Washington County, um, including urban unincorporated areas. Um, so that, that's, Cedar Mill is one of the larger libraries in the system.
So, they're wrapping this strategy in together with unincorporated and cities, which sounds complicated to me.
Right. And that's, that's the uniqueness about our, um, organization, because we are, uh, a cooperative system that is, you know, partnering with the county, with cities and nonprofits. That's really, um, a unicorn.
Okay. And then, um, yeah, to me, it seems like taking those apart seem a little, would be interesting, um, to help with cities, especially I've concerned about, I mean, part of why we have city things is because we have local control, and part of the way that we do that, especially with libraries, is through expertise and lib, um, librarians. I was fortunate in my masters to work with a lot of librarians, and I'm just curious, um, if you just have a summary, really quick summary of the benefit of actual trained, skilled librarians in our libraries versus, uh, Google or whatever is going to happen, artificial intelligence, uh, which uses a lot of water, by the way. More water than we use in a lifetime.
Right. You know, uh, one of the things that we get trained to do when you're becoming a librarian is doing a reference interview, and really what that means is helping you figure out what you're looking for. And I cannot tell you the number of times somebody comes into the library, "I'm looking for a book about dogs," and you go take them to the pet section or whatever. Well, really, they're looking for the history of how dogs evolved from wolves or something, something, something. So, like, you can ask questions for Google, but you only get the results that are as good as the question that you ask. And, um, you don't get any guidance on what's misinformation and what's reliable information, and those are all things that librarians, uh, know. We are also trained about how to help people, um, to find appropriate reading materials for their interests, their age level, um, you know, their family situation, and, um, and we're very much trained on how literacy ties into all of that. So, that's my, that's my nutshell, I guess.
So, I just want to consider those things too, because I just think the social service work that the library does is really important, and the human touch that goes with that. And it's kind of funny, because there's a lot of people, I mean, as a social worker, I understand this, um, my husband talks as the praiser, like, "I own a house, so I can do this," or "If we just get a committee together, we can do this." And the reality is, um, at least in my field, health, well-being, safety, treating people with dignity and respect, understanding how to operate, um, clean and, um, healthy, helpful organizations is embedded in the training. So, um, I just think there's a lot of hidden, uh, costs or whatever that was, values that come through, and I think that illuminating all of that, especially specifically to our city, would be a really important piece to educate and uplift, um, for awareness for not just the conversation, but the public. Thank you. Thanks for your work.
That's right.
Hi, thank you for the presentation. Um, could you, I, I do recall, and Counselor Brooks brought something up about the unincorporated areas that are getting allocation. Is, and I, maybe I don't know how to read the, the graph that you have, where it says not final, but if you put it up there, I just wonder, um, you said Aloha is not part of the, um, but there, it seems like they're getting a lot funded.
They, yes.
Is there something that happened that they're kind of getting more than, I mean, their allocation seems to be, today's mention, why they're getting so much more than some of the already in the city, um, in the, in the county cities? Or like, I, I'm just curious.
Sure. Aloha is the newest library in Washington County. It joined the cooperative in 2015, and at that time, um, WCCLS kind of carved out a little service area for them and added, we, we did a levy, um, replacement, so we had an increase in 2015, which, uh, created the additional revenues to be able to bring Aloha onboard. I, my perspective is, I think that represents how under-resourced they were when they were brought in.
Oh, I got it. And, so that means that they're just gonna kind of level them or balance out the...
That's the hope.
Be more equal to what they serve. But they're not part of Washington County? Or are they part of Washington?
They're, yes. Aloha is an unincorporated community, um, in, in between like Beaverton and Hillsborough, in that area.
All right, just, uh, that, I was just kind of remembering that there were some, uh, from when, uh, Commissioner Snyder was here, he, we talked about cities that were getting funds that were not part of the county, um, that we're funding, and it seemed like some of the cities that are, that need the funds are getting cut. And, uh, so I just, it just sparked an interest in what was happening there and, you know, giving priority to the cities that are paying, uh, these funds, so we can be funded. That was just, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Counselor Perez and Pratt.
What, I, the funding methodology, I'll start there. I just, um, I'm wondering, so was the fact that, like, I, I'm just guessing here, but I'm assuming our library probably per capita has a pretty high usage comparatively, and was that considered at all?
We did, I mean, the, the funding methodology does not currently look at usage statistics as part of the factors.
Okay, that's unfortunate, because, that, I, to me, it should be a factor, but it's not my choice.
And that's, that's where, you know, it has been in the past, and unfortunately, that has contributed to some of the inequities in our current funding. But that could be something that is still added as a, as a additional criteria.
Right. And then I know there, it looks like they're looking kind of like at base service levels, because I think of our, our library, a lot of things to you, is, because we don't have a community center, it serves as our community center, so we have multiple uses for it, so cut hours really affects our community.
Mm-hmm.
And then on the, um, oh, the collection management, um, I sure hope something can be worked out. I, I get if they say we're going to have this base set of books that we send every library, but if, I, I mean, it, it, like, it makes us like a fast food chain instead of a local restaurant, in my opinion, that when we don't have, like, things that are unique. And, um, I would guess, and I'm asking you, do you kind of, like, when you have people ask for things, you guys are kind of tracking what people here want, correct?
Oh, absolutely, yes. We, we, uh, we regularly monitor the holds to see what's in demand and what do we need more copies of, or what did we miss on buying that our patrons are requesting. We also take purchase suggestions, so people can submit, "I'd like this title," and most of the time, we do purchase those, um, unless it doesn't fit with our collection development policy. I do believe that will still be part of a centralized system as well, to have that kind of, uh, ability to suggest. But I agree, I, there's a, there's a lot of room for how this is implemented, and I, I'd really like that opportunity to talk about, you know, how, how it gets implemented and what's the best way to serve our patrons throughout the whole county.
Right. Okay, well, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Counselor Gonzalez.
Thank you very much. I can see that you're passionate in how you speak about this. Um, a question I have is, we have, you said you have, we, we used twenty FTEs, and then there's only funding for fifteen FTEs. How, how does audiobooks and the future play into the mix, because it costs more to purchase an audiobook? And it's trending way up right now, that it's, it's, um, become very popular as the way to go. How does that affect the decisions on staffing?
You know, in, in terms of audiobooks, we're actually buying fewer audiobooks for our library, because more people are using the digital audiobooks at this point. A lot of people don't even have CD players in their car anymore. Um, so there's, there's decrease in demand for audiobooks at our library, we've seen that. Um, and, and that changed, you know, over time, things change. Um, you know, like, I remember when we stopped buying video cassettes at the, you know, the, the library that I used to work at, and, you know, we've added board games at our library. So, I, that has been the way that it has worked out, is that we, we distribute collection buying across multiple librarians, and so as those collection buying patterns shift over time, we just make, we reassign.
So, just a follow-up, so I understand the audiobooks, but there is like Libby app, for example. Would that be considered an audiobook, or that's just the books on tape? Or how would you classify?
Um, yeah, Libby, Libby is the, uh, is the ebook platform, so that is all managed through Washington, uh, through WCCLS currently. Um, so that includes ebooks that you can read on any ebook device or your phone and the audiobooks, uh, as well. So, that, we're not involved as far as the staffing for that.
If we have to get the collection, that would impact, well, it would not, because it goes...
It wouldn't, because it's, yeah, it's through the county. So, um, they have staff who currently do that buying, they would need additional staff to be able to do the physical material buying.
Thank you. So, um, if I remember right, so we have thirty-one thousand people being served by twenty-point-five FTE, and so that number is pretty astronomical, right, when we think about that, especially if you're running a business, right? You know? Um, so could you speak to, um, that was only the Washington County, but I thought that we served also the Clackamas County residents, so what number really are we serving?
Yeah, you know, that's, that's the weird thing about service populations, because, especially where we live, because, um, we get library patrons who live in Clackamas County, Multnomah County, Yamhill County, and Washington County. But because we are a Washington County system, the funding goes through the Washington County system. We have an agreement between Clackamas, Multnomah, and Washington Counties, so that library patrons for, or people who live in any of those counties can, can get a library card from any of those library systems. But other than that, uh, you know, it's really hard to tell. And, um, and that was something that we, we kind of batted around, like, how do you define what your population is? And, um, so the best that we can do is, is kind of set a geographical area. Um, I think that the thirty-one thousand number is a pretty reasonable number. It, it represents our city population plus, and, and that, I think, is a pretty good representation for what we see come through our doors.
Thank you. And I'm wondering, we talked earlier about in the, in the budgeting process in different times, that there would then be a cut in hours, um, with the loss of that five FTE, but I guess what I wonder is, what do we as residents really lose, the closed doors? I mean, these people who are currently doing collections as part of their job, they're doing a lot of other things. So, could you really speak to what the loss really is for our community, just a little bit more extensively?
Sure.
So, we're clear? Thank you.
I would like to clarify one thing, which is, is about the, the hours that you mentioned. So, as part of the base service levels, one of the criteria is forty-five hours minimum operations per week. And that has become part of, um, part of the funding methodology, um, work in terms of the county is supporting base services, the county is supporting forty-five hours of operation. Our library is open more than forty-five hours, we do not plan to cut hours. We plan to keep our library open fifty-four hours a week. We'll figure out how we're going to do that, once we know how much money we're, we're going to have in hand coming from the county. So, I don't think we will feel a loss there. However, if our neighbors cut hours, and Shrewwood Library is cutting hours in their next fiscal year, that is going to increase demand on our services. We will see that starting next year. Um, in terms of the collection management piece, um, all the librarians who do all of the programming that you love at our library are the ones who buy the books. So, um, you know, that is part of their job, um, assuming that we are able to keep our staff whole, which is certainly our intent, we have no intent of eliminating staff positions at this point, we will be reallocating work. There's always more work to do. Uh, we could do more outreach, we could do other things. But, um, so I'm, I am hopeful that our Tuolatin residents will not feel that loss in our community. I can't really speak to what might happen in other communities, though.
Yeah, thank you. And to just finally... And to just final question, sorry, thank you, to clarify, this is, I've heard it explained in, in one conversation, is kind of an on-ramp and an off-ramp in a little bit of a way. I know we looked at that funding, the, the bars. And so likely, I mean, it feels like, should the levy pass, we're kind of looking at two years out even, or maybe potentially three years out, is that a...
For the collection, or for...
Well, I don't know about the collection, but for the funding, I don't know. So could you speak to that? When would the collection take place? I don't know.
Gotcha, gotcha. So, so if the levy, well, regardless of whether the levy passes or not, the current levy ends next summer. And so the work that we've been doing has been focused on the next levy cycle. So how we, how we allocate and manage the funding for that next five years. Once we finish this current phase, our next phase would be looking at the long-term solutions. So what happens after that, after those five years are up? Do we continue with this kind of model that we've had? Do we look at something different? And, and how does, you know, how does that approach get structured? So that's still really up to be decided at this point. The, the current process with the, our intergovernmental agreements are tied to the local option levy. So we will be signing a new intergovernmental agreement in conjunction with the levy funding, and that'll have to get ironed out within the next year. Beyond that, WCCLS has said that the centralized collection management would begin in July of 2027. That's without our input or discussion.
Great. Okay, thank you very much.
I'm a little bit, it stuck with me with the allocation based on, not per capita, but based on, or usage, it's based on, how do they allocate or decide how much money could be allocated? Is it by population of the city, basically, but not usage of the library?
Correct. It would be a service, I mean, it would be a population figure. So it would be our city population plus some additional population for neighboring unincorporated areas.
So for instance, Beaverton might be getting more funds, but we are getting, we're serving, let's just say they're serving 25,000, and we're serving 31,000, 35,000, sorry, can't see, 31,000. So it's not based on that, it's based, I just, I'm just baffled by that. I'm sorry, I just, because is there anything that we can, that, that's where the equitable part, that it's kind of lingering in my head. And what can I do, what can we do to make sure that we're being seen as, we're serving more population, even though our facility, our population in the city, it's, it's not as Beaverton, or Hillsborough, or some, some Tiger, for what it's worth, or... So I'm just kind of wondering, what can we do as a, Maria, what can I do to make sure that we're being heard about this? To me, that's a problem. That's where we're getting cut. And I feel like it's not fair when we're serving a higher population than others that are getting more funding. That's just my thought right now.
Mm-hmm. If, if I remember when Commissioner Snyder was here, I think he, he kind of spoke a little bit about the, the former funding methodology, and how some libraries kind of played and gamed the system. And that is the potential risk of using usage-based factors. So if we, if we did it based on number of checkouts or program attendance, a library could decide to funnel all their energy into a certain area to drive up usage and therefore get more money. And that is, I, I wasn't here, but my understanding is that's part of what happened in the past. However, if you, the, the funding components that we're currently looking at, population, and then, you know, a cost for FTE and, and direct cost allocation, that is consistent. That's service consistency. Equity hasn't been factored into that formula yet, in my opinion. And to me, one, I, one way to think about it is, a library system that is consistent might have the same open hours at every branch. But a library system that is looking at service equity might realize that the southern part of the system has more single-parent families, or families where both parents are working outside the home. And they need more access to libraries on weekends and evenings instead of daytime. That's considering service equity. And we've not, we've not built that into the formula yet.
Okay, thank you.
Councilperson Brooks.
Thanks, your question. Dug tail nicely with what I was thinking about. I am also concerned just about the lack of our services from Washington County. So if those projections, we need to have less people doing more. So I'm also curious about equity around availability of employees, for people to get support from, that don't only include libraries, but include community, other supports that other communities are much more enriched in than we are. This is more troubling with the conversation of federal cuts to, possible cuts to community development block grants, and other resources that used to, that we could count on coming back into our communities, that I don't know where it's going now, maybe a blown-up rocket. So the thing for me is, like, our library doesn't seem like a huge footprint. If there's more cuts to the county in other resources, what does our population lose in that, where we're already behind in geographical equity? And how much human touch do we, again, suffer losses of for the people that are the most impacted? And then what are the projections? We're going two years out with an economy that's at least going to flatten, if not... I mean, I guess my thing is, speaking to the projected financial outlook that we might be facing, especially with pulling resources out of our community, and jobs out of our community, and where people go to get their books when that happens, with less people there helping them. And then the other question that I had for you was, when you spoke to that you would like to have input in some of this conversation, how could you have input in those, in that, how can we support you having more input in these conversations?
Thank you for your questions. And, and I share your concerns. I, I mean, I, when, when you all spoke with Commissioner Snyder, I, you, you raised concerns about county services. I know you were well aware of how Tuolaton fares in terms of services compared to other cities in our, in our county, and that is definitely something we face in the library. Whether it is, you know, needing help from a mental health, the mental health rapid response team, but they're not available to come, and we've got somebody in crisis that we're trying to deal with and we're not social workers. I mean, that happens. You know, trying to help people who are in need of emergency shelter and getting them connected with service providers can be really challenging. Having Megan Cohen come on board as the liaison has made some really big impacts because she's been here in our community. She's met with us, she's seen what our local needs are and what our local situation is, and then she can advocate on our behalf. And, and, and connect us with, with resources that, that we otherwise might not be able to access. So that's, I am very concerned about what that picture might look like for us. I, I see in the next couple of years, a higher need for services at our library, and, and more acute needs, people coming in who have urgency with their help, that they need help with. We're going to keep doing our work to, to meet their needs, and I'm going to do my best so that the librarians don't have to worry about that, you know, the, the money picture as they're doing that work. I think you, as a council, have been doing great work, being advocates for Tuolaton, and, and I, you know, certainly hope to see that continue in, in terms of, in terms of the library services. And, and I think, you know, as I said, I, I think Commissioner Snyder heard loud and clear the concerns that you guys shared with him. And, and I, I am hopeful that that will make a difference. I am hopeful that, that, that there will be greater collaboration, that we will have more involvement in discussions before decisions are made, instead of just hearing about it after a decision is made, or that kind of thing. You know, the levy, of course, is, is another huge component, that, you know, without that levy funding, that conversation is going to be a lot harder than it is with the levy funding. That's what comes to mind. I will think about, you know, what, what else we can, we can offer, and, you know, maybe there's some, some talking points we can share as you're having conversations with other electeds.
And the one thing I'm just going to say really quickly is this eviction prevention, defunding is very concerning to me, because it's the most effective and efficient way of helping to prevent homelessness. So I am very concerned about the need that we're going to be facing, and you're going to be facing, and I don't want your team to be burned out or overwhelmed.
Thank you. Thank you.
The, the library levy and the safety levy, are they going to be combined as one item to vote on, or are they separate issues?
They are separate.
Okay.
Previously, though, we've had one ask for an increase and one ask for a renewal, and this time, they are both asking for an increase.
Thanks.
All right. Couple of questions, Jeranne. So timing-wise, because I do have concerns about the levy and timing of this study. So, high level, when is this supposed to be done in terms of them getting this on the ballot in November? Because, of course, they're all going to be coming out asking for support of a levy. And if the levy, as we've told Commissioner Snyder and Chair Harrington, it's going to be tough to support a levy where Tuolaton residents get their library services cut. So the hold no harm sounds fantastic, but I want to see how it works out, as you're saying, you know, saying. And the collections management, I think you're dead on, one of the things that makes us unique is the unique collections, and how much is it really going to save to have centralized collections management versus each library having their unique library, you know, stock of books? That does get rotated throughout the county, because there's different niches, there's different silos, if you will. So any idea on the timeline of when this is supposed to wrap up, and, and then them kicking the full gear of, you know, rah rah rah, pass the levy?
You know, we're doing them both at the same time.
Yeah.
So, so the, the levy's definitely moving forward. The public hearing will be tomorrow, and assuming that, you know, goes, goes forward, the county will file the, the ballot measures with the Secretary of State, and that train will leave the station. While it's on the track, we'll have, we've got a couple of meetings scheduled for July that Cheryl and I will be involved in to continue refining the funding and how that gets implemented. And then another work session in August, where we start talking about proposed governance agreements. Decision point late September, which would be about the funding allocation, governance, and service boundaries. That would enable us to begin work on the revisions to the intergovernmental agreements, to get them signed before June of 26, before the next levy cycle. And then, once the current phase, looking at funding and governance wraps, the next phase, excuse me, there's a little bit more work on governance improvements this fall. Finalizing the IGAs is planned for the spring. And then, starting next summer, we would begin talking about the long-term governance alternatives.
Okay. So, the governance and stuff, I'm not as worried, it's more the funding mechanisms? So when is that plan to be semi-solid? Okay, well, let's go forth with this.
I, if, if everything tracks as it's currently planned, the funding mechanism should be resolved by the end of September. We may still be working on governance agreements while the levy is, is being voted on, but unless something changes, that's the plan.
Okay. All right. And then, just a frustration for some of the mayors is, as Councilor Reyes was saying, you're seeing this huge spike for Aloha, and the head-scratcher is, you know, the age-old question that former Commissioner Roy Rogers mentioned is, you know, Aloha's getting city services and they're not a city. And where, how do you factor this, you know, equity into this, that they are not a city, they're unincorporated, Washington County's not to provide, not to provide city services, that's not what they're supposed to do, yet they are doing it at three libraries. But, of course, we want people, those folks to have libraries, but to go from a half million to three and a half million is a huge lift for, you know, I realize Aloha...
And I think, I think Aloha themselves think, would think that's a huge lift, yeah.
So, you know, we're getting a little bit behind here, but yeah, keep us in the loop on the hold no harm and collections. You know, I have no problem contacting all the commissioners and the chair. I don't think any of us will have any problem doing that. I know there are, a few of them are taking summer vacations now, so things are going to slow down, especially now they have this other issue with the federal dollars being in limbo. So they've got their plates full with, basically, a minimum amount of commissioners around for next month or so. So anything pops, let us know, how we can support you and your, your staff. You know, moments notice, we can make a phone call, send an email.
And I'd be happy to come back later this summer to give you guys another update on how that funding piece is coming together.
They're going to be calling us, asking for support of that levy, and I'm going to be like, show me the money.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Jeranne.
I appreciate the questions.
Okay. All right. That brings us to City Council 2025 Priorities Review and Update. Cheryl and Lambo, City Manager.
Thank you. I'll just sit here if you don't mind. Bates, can you pull up the, the presentation, and then, can you be my clicker? Since, thank you. And I don't know if it will take 30 minutes anyway, so we may be just fine on, on timing. So the goal will be to review the, the progress of the priorities on a regular basis, maybe every three or four months. So here we are, June, your advance happened in the end of February, I believe, yes, the end of February, first of March, and so here we are in June. The next one will be in September, an update on that. So if you could, is that the next one? Okay. So there are seven priority areas, as you know, and if you turn your placemat to the, the backside, you will see this there. So you don't have to read it, it's on your, on your placemat. The first priority area is neighborhood engagement, and you see in front of you the 245 outcomes, specific outcomes. And I won't go through those, but then you have six, I believe, six or eight, eight actions under neighborhood engagement. And if you could go to the next slide, Bates. This is too small to read. I, I, you do have it in your emails. But to, to kind of run through a few of these that have significant highlights. So 1-1 through 1-4 have to do with street trees and sidewalks. And there's a conduct a street tree inventory, research adaptive street tree species, the implement and adopt a new sidewalk and street tree policy, evaluate programmatic changes, and provide education to the community. The actual sequence of this is, those four, is going to work this way. We're currently doing an inventory of street trees, and that includes what, what street tree, where there are holes, and, and where there are places that need, need trees. That, that, like I said, that inventory is underway. We are also working on an adaptive street tree species policy, because a big chunk of the sidewalks, sidewalk maintenance program has... of the sidewalks, sidewalk maintenance program has to do with the trees. And so we don't, so the next thing would be doing this backlog of sidewalks, of sidewalk maintenance that we haven't been able to get to, that is so frustrating out there. But we don't want to do the backlog and put street trees in and have that same problem. So the inventory is important and then getting this adaptive street tree list that we can replace, uh, trees with when we do the backlog. Uh, so that's the sequence. Inventory, do the adaptive species, um, work, the backlog, and then the new program that you talked about that we'll be back to talk about, um, that would have, uh, property owners pitching in, um, a portion of it and the city either having a grant or, uh, doing a percentage of, uh, the sidewalk maintenance. So all of that work, the inventory and the adaptive species work will, I believe, will be done this, by this fall. And, um, and then we can start on the backlog, um, piece of it. So all of that will happen well before the new year. Um, it will take, I believe, a year or so to do this backlog, backlog work, and while we're doing the backlog work, we can, we will, um, be, um, finalizing the new program. All right. So that's one to four there. 1.5, oh, yes, thank you. 1.5 is, uh, CIO work, uh, community involvement organizations and including hosting an annual meeting. Um, we have a joint work session scheduled for August 25th with the CIOs, so they will be here. In addition, um, as you will, you will hopefully adopt the budget tonight and, uh, the grants, um, have gone from 1,500 to 2,500 for the 25, 26 budget. Uh, 1.6, relook at the maps and make the boundaries, the CIO boundaries and make appropriate, um, uh, revisions. And so the CIOs started review, reviewing those, there's a typo in that, uh, reviewing, reviewing them, um, in June, and so that work is underway. Let's see. Um, 1.7 and 1.8, I don't, I don't have anything necessarily to, uh, point out on that. Uh, priority two, housing. So you see the four outcomes there in front of you and then the actions, there's five actions under housing and, um, 2.1 examined the options for creating and incentivizing diversified housing. Uh, so we do have funding in the 25, 26 budget and community development for the housing production strategy. And, uh, so that work will be coming before you. Um, Steve and Aquila, um, will be doing, um, before you on, on that, on that work. This is also complementary to the Cora, the, uh, Core Opportunity Redevelopment Area, um, downtown redevelopment work, so, um, that is kind of intermingled in that. Uh, 2.2, respond to legislative updates. I will say that we have, um, been very active and engaged, and by we, I mean Megan and Cody and, and you, um, to the, uh, this, uh, legislative session and, um, paying attention to, uh, things that impact us in the housing arena. Um, I wanted to call out 2.4, advocate for services for Tuolatin to support housing insecurity and homelessness, uh, leverage the homelessness liaison. Jeranne mentioned Megan Cohen, she is doing a brilliant job. We are so thankful to, for her work and her expertise. Um, we are on a six-month schedule to have her come in front of you and make presentations. So she was here in February, maybe it was February? Um, and so six months, uh, she'll be back in front of you. We did participate in the point in time count. Uh, we have, uh, nominally participated in it before, uh, but nothing to the extent that Megan helped us. Uh, we tabled at the library and, um, went, Megan went out with, um, the police and so we, um, we were very involved in the point in time count. Um, unless you want anything else on that? Um, economic development. So, uh, the four outcomes here, um, that we're doing, we're moving and shaking in economic development land. Um, if you look at the actions, um, 3.1, I, I'm sorry, could you click to the next slide? Thank you. Uh, revisit the food cart policy, we've talked a little bit about that, we had a listening, listening session here. There are funds allocated, uh, to look at that in, uh, community developments budget in the 25, 26 budget, but that is also integrated with the Cora work as well, as you know. Um, let's see, uh, the next one I wanted to point out, the leverage new staff capacity to engage with stakeholders, the 3.4, um, I put underway and ongoing. Um, I will say that Sid has been connecting with residents, property owners, developers and businesses, uh, very actively and has been, um, uh, a, a new capacity for us in developing community relationships and stakeholders, um, in the economic development sphere. Uh, 3.5 is, of course, um, very underway and I think you've heard more about the, um, urban renewal areas than in the last six months than you've heard about it in the last three years, put together. Um, we've, have an action completed kickoff planning process for Cora, so, uh, that's exciting. Um, the 3.7 is underway, the community identity, um, as a part of the Cora redevelopment process. And then, um, I wanted to point out in 3.8, the destination signage, um, not just for the Commons and the Vets Plaza, but kind of, uh, points of interest. So we have a management intern coming on, uh, this summer and part of their work will be to do some research around wayfind, wayfinding signage and what other cities do and, um, we think that we can perhaps use some tourism dollars, uh, to enhance that and so I'm excited about, um, getting, moving on the wayfinding signage, um, project initiative. Under transportation, uh, priority four, um, there are six specific actions, um, and, uh, starting with 4.1, completing the transportation system plan update. So that is of course underway. We are scheduled for a council work session on July 14th, uh, just to make sure that you know what's in there and if any questions, I know that you've gotten some community comments and so we'll, um, answer any questions that you have, kind of talk through it and then it'll be, um, approval after, in a, in a council meeting after. Um, 4.3, uh, of course it's underway in the legislative session. We do have a, um, on, uh, work session scheduled on August 25th to debrief the, the legislative session. I believe Thorn Run will be here, uh, for that, so, um, store up your questions for them. And then, uh, work session in quarter four of this year to set priorities for the 26 session. Um, you have, um, done letters of support for the transportation package, which that's kind of in flux right now, but we'll see what happens with that. Um, 4.4, utilize the lobbyists to help Tuolatin effectively advocate for priorities. I think, uh, Thorn Run has been particularly helpful when it comes to our asks, uh, whether that's at the federal, federal level or, or the state level and, um, maybe I'll, um, preview this now, well, no, I'm going to talk about it under the environment. Sorry. Um, I think that was what I wanted to point out on that. On the environment, um, so these are a little out of, oh, there's the, the outcomes that you've, um, you worked on that are on your placemat. So, uh, 5.1 is a little out of sequence. Um, it will follow 5.3, so you, another action completed is 5.2. You identified a funding source to support ongoing climate action efforts and, uh, thank you for that. I, we're meeting with PGE about the, that increase. We've, uh, had discussions about the building and, um, the, uh, Share the Pennies, which, um, we're thinking of a name and I'm interested in your input, uh, pennies for climate action. Anyway, um, right. No pennies being made anymore. Bitcoin for climate action. All right. Uh, let's see, the, hire the staff person, so that is underway. Funds are allocated in the 25, 26 budget. We are finalizing the classification description right now and we'll start the recruitment, um, in the next week or two. So be on the lookout for that, I'll point it out. Support environmental resiliency via planning and programmatic endeavors. Um, uh, this is underway. It, um, I put up here, examples include the N-Pipe, which is our micro turbine, um, project that we're on the final, Rachel called it the page turn, the final page turns of the review and it's due to begin construction within the next month. So that's really exciting. Our 108th reservoir, uh, which is also a resiliency project, are just two examples of those. Um, the backyard habitat program, you received an update about that in, um, May, which was great and we'll continue, um, working on that. B-City programmatic efforts, that's also underway. You got a presentation last council meeting about that. Um, 5.8, secure funding for seismic valves at all the reservoirs. So that's included in your 2025 legislative priorities. Update as of today, the 1.75 million is included in the general fund budget for the state, um, so it still has to be adopted, but the, um, that is super exciting. Um, and the shade structure, I'm just giving you an update on that, the 250,000 is not included, at least yet. Uh, there's a possibility that it could be, um, but I, I, you know, given, I, I, I'm overjoyed that the, the seismic valves are included in, in that budget and thanks to your work, thanks to our staff work, but also I think Thorn Run had a, had a big hand in that, so I, I think they were worth their weight in gold on that one. All right, um, onto parks. So you see the, oh, yeah, you see the, um, the outcomes there and I think they're good ones, high-level outcomes. Let's see, um, six point, I just, uh, I wanted to point out 6.2 and 6.3, those kind of are going together at this point, reviewing policy and practices, um, to expand access for residents and then review growth opportunities. So we have, um, we're, I think we released the RFP, uh, there's funds added in the budget to do a comprehensive analysis, um, of our recreation programs, the fee structure, our policies and practices, uh, really with the goal of, um, being to add to the capacity that we have in our summer rec programs, which started today, actually camp started today. Uh, 6.4, complete projects, parks projects, that is certainly underway, uh, with the highly visible Vets Plaza, but the Victoria Woods staircase has been finalized and I believe, uh, Kira was here, mm, not too long ago, giving you an update on, on those. Um, wanted to point out 6.7, exploring partnerships with the school district. We, that is underway. We've had several really productive meetings with the school district and are very hopeful and positive and, uh, just, we will find an opportunity to give you an update on, on those discussions as they continue to take place. And then 6.8, revenue opportunities to ensure stable and ongoing funding for parks maintenance. We signed a contract with a company called FCS to do the analysis of that and, um, looking forward to what they, uh, produce in a, um, to make sure that we have a, a sinking fund for, that we don't get back in, um, in the spot that we were at. All right. Um, priority seven, culture and identity. You see the four outcomes there. Um, 7.1, the idea committee. So the committee received a presentation from Sid regarding the downtown revitalization project. The committee members are very engaged and going to be, um, tabling at, uh, Viva Tuolatin and, uh, they're scheduled for a Parks and Recreation, uh, presentation. So they are getting, getting good, good input and, um, and they're, they're doing good stuff. Uh, 7.2, I'd say it's underway. We had our first training, thanks to the chief and Jeranne on, um, what is trauma-informed, um, concepts and behaviors and what is it not? Uh, so we had a supervisor meeting last week and, um, that was the first of our trainings on that. There's six modules that, um, are, that our organization is going through and then, um, we'll have a opportunity for the council to, um, be trained on that as well, so. Good stuff. Um, research is underway on a strategic communication plan, um, and also research, research underway on 7.4, the comprehensive planning process. So, um, Aquila and her team are, um, looking at other cities and I think she talked about this at the budget committee meeting, maybe? Yeah. Launch a new city website. Megan was here, Megan and Heidi were here earlier, uh, a few meetings ago and talked about how that's happening. The launch is expected fall of winter 2025. That was all I wanted to point out. Um, the, lots of work going on in the organization, of course, that lots that isn't listed up there, um, but wanted you to be assured that good work is happening on your priorities.
Questions for Cheryl? So President Pratt?
I just want to say that, um, I think there's a lot of interest in finding out how that communication with TTSD is going at some point.
Other questions, comments? Council Brooks?
I just want to thank you for the update and, um, just want to acknowledge too that I thought it was a, even though we missed you at the advance, I thought it was productive and concrete.
All right. Thanks, Cheryl. Uh, I have number four is a proclamation request. We have a request from the Tuolatin daughters of American Revolution to, uh, recognize the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. This is a relatively new proclamation. I think the first time we did it was last year, so this falls under tier four category and, uh, must be approved by council in order for it to go forward. Uh, do I have, uh, support for allowing the proclamation to recognize the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week? Yes? Yep. That's a yes. Right. That was fast. Last year was a young woman who presented, a very young woman, yeah.
There was quite the crowd that came with her.
All right. Uh, that brings us to council communication roundtable and, uh, communications. So I've got Council Sacco's up for the pledge allegiance tonight. Uh, any questions or concerns with the consent agenda? Okay. Don't see any. Uh, we have no proclamations, so we'll go ahead and do the roundtable. Let me just make sure I got everything here. Yep. So we'll go ahead and start with Council Sacco.
Thank you. Um, so on June 10th, um, I attended the WRWC board meeting, um, where we received updates on the Wollamak intake facilities, uh, the Wollamak water supply system. Uh, we also reviewed the drought report as we do every meeting. the drought report as we do every meeting. Just something interesting, that the snow water equivalent for the Willamette basin is currently measuring 125% above average, which is also consistent with the other basins across Oregon. So, good news there. If anybody needs additional details, please let me know. We also had the idea committee meeting, and we have some newer members, and I just am so excited to see their level of engagement over the past few months. Really exciting work that they're doing, not only in the community, but, in the committee, but beyond. Some things that we discussed, food carts and food cart pods. The committee is very, very interested in advancing that conversation, and they are well-informed about the history of food carts, and they want to, you know, they want to express the, I would say urgency, but I think there is some urgency around making sure that we don't get, you know, we're not left behind in that space. And so I wouldn't be surprised if you'd hear from community members, and I will do my best to also just echo their want for food carts in the city. We also talked about summer outreach strategy. Cheryl mentioned Viva. They'll be tabling at Viva, and also the Pride concert on August 8th as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Hillier?
I think you had no formal meetings.
Council Reyes?
I did not have any formal meetings. Yeah.
Council Gonzalez?
I have not had any formal meetings as well.
Council Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor. I had sent information regarding the PAB meeting in the emails and some of the funding challenges that the county is facing. We, I attended the communications meeting as an alternate with Bates for updates. We hadn't really heard from that committee for a while. It was an interesting conversation, kind of complex, and just, I'll just say a bottom line is there's a shift from cable to streaming, and so some of the protections that people have through airwaves and contracting through cable and TV access for public meetings is changing, and the MAC is pretty much a cable company and distributor. So they're looking at different ways that they're negotiating contracts with providers that are going to be going off cable. So that will be a new thing. It used to be required that they have that, and there will be an opportunity for cities to negotiate right of way, which should help make up some costs. I think that it would be good to see ways that cities can connect and share information, create best practices, since there's more, there's a diversity now with the technology that some of the advocacy and policy is not copped up with. And either the MAC is going to shift practices, or they're going to slowly get defunded. So looking at how we can be leaders in that conversation is, I think, a good opportunity, especially for communities that might not be quite as savvy as we have Bates and the mayor and a lot of really smart technological people, and we're invested in the community's access to information and public information. So there's a lot on that, and if you want more information, feel free to reach out, and I'll do my best. And I think that was it for formal. Oh, and I had the mayor's call, which was good. We just talked about what's going on and retirement life. And then I also wanted to acknowledge World Refugee Day on 6/20. I was invited to go down there, although I couldn't make it. Oh, we also had the Twalton Arts Advisory Committee. So in that committee, we reviewed the new box wraps, which hopefully you've seen around the community. We reviewed a plan for in-person meetings to discuss more interactions and information from the artists themselves, ideas for next year for the budget, as well as the following meeting will be a tour on the river with the river keepers of the new park site. And there's also going to be, I mean, I think it should be installed by now, right? The new stormwater drain art mural. It's either this week or next week. So that'll be right by where the new riverfront park is going to be, so keep your eyes open for that. And also thank you for hosting Police Department, the blood drive. I donated blood. It was great. I had cookies.
All right. Cheryl?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see. So I attended last Monday, the 16th, I attended a Metro Managers Meeting that was hosted by Metro at the zoo, and I honestly do not know how you get a bit of work done, Council Reyes. Like, seeing the babies, I just, I was in love. I was trying to think about like a stroller for a 500-pound elephant, you know, it's like, how would that work? But anyway, they, there were some really good updates. Did talk about the supportive housing services, so the measure. So the work groups have been meeting, the work group has been meeting, and the 16th was their last meeting that night, and I have not kept up with what happened after that, but what they said was that the council was going to take action after the work group's recommendation. So you may know more than I do. I've gotten some scuttlebutt, just, you know, just on the down-low, but I don't think the council has taken action yet. But they are also working on future visioning. So the last Metro vision was in 1995, and so they, and a lot has changed since 1995, and so they're going through that process. I, my advice to Metro remains, like, how can you be a convener without weaponizing your power and becoming, you know, overtaking local control? Because they do have a very impressive role as a convener, and so I hope that they will continue to do that. Also had an interesting discussion about their budget. They are cutting 52 positions, so 4% of their workforce, primarily in the convention center and expo center and parks in nature, but mostly because TLT is not recovering post-pandemic. They don't expect it to recover until 2030 or 2031. Yeah. So anyway, it was a very interesting meeting. Somebody alluded to Washington County. We've been having discussions with Washington County about their funding situation, and as it relates to funds from the federal government, and I know there's been talks about it. The most direct impact to us is the CDBG funds that we were awarded for the Pole Center project, and the, they have to be expended by June of 2026, and they are not, they are not going to give us a notice to proceed until sometime this fall, and we cannot get reimbursed for anything that we spend before the notice to proceed, and the goalpost has not shifted. So we still have to spend it by the end of June. So advocating for the county to figure out the situation, I know they're going through legal review, they're getting community input, but their council, the commission, needs to make a decision. So. I mentioned that N-Pipe is beginning construction. That's exciting. The transient lodging tax bill, so that's House Bill 3962. I don't think it's had a vote yet.
It's for a public hearing tomorrow.
The public hearing is tomorrow. The, we are very in favor of that. It would shift the split. Right now, the transient lodging tax has a 70%, 70% of it has to be spent on tourism, and 30% has to be spent, can be spent in the general fund. That would, the bill would change that split to 60-40, which would be great. I went to a meeting that Washington County hosted regarding homelessness, and there were a lot of good roundtable discussion, but bottom line, no time, place, manner changes in this legislative session are anticipated. So our legal situation is stable and steady. Adding the shelter beds and access center in Tigard has been a boon to the county, and it really has been a boon to, like, our region. Met with PGE regarding the climate action plan funding. That was exciting. Economic development news. Sid has been meeting with Business Oregon and Greater Portland, Inc., a major manufacturing company not to be named. It has a secret code name, like Project Tuna. I don't know. Doesn't sound very appealing, but they're down to two states, an East Coast state and Oregon, and their location in Oregon would be Twalton. So very exciting, and got our fingers crossed that Sid will be able to sweet-talk them into coming to Twalton. A couple of date things. July 4th holiday is before the next council meeting, so be safe. July 10th at 2:00 PM is the retirement party for Tony at the Police Department, and then we will do something here at council in July for him. Our first concert is July 11th at 6:30 at Community Park. It's Johnny Limbo and the Lugnuts. And then the next day is Viva Twalton, and there's also a concert associated with Viva Twalton. Viva Twalton, just some events. So the event opens at 2:00. There's a foam machine, not sure what that entails. There's an emcee all day. There's live music. There's a quinceañera fashion show and waltz performances. More foam machine. There's a parade featuring flowers, flags, noise makers, Viva banner, Selena in costume, horses, PD bikes, crafts from the library, more music and live music, and then there's, then the concert at 6:30. So, something to enjoy and come out for. That's my update.
So President Pratt?
So is that a foam machine like the one at Blender Dash?
Yeah.
That's good fun. I only had one thing, and that was the mayor was out of town, so I was the emcee host for Andrea Salinas, Congresswoman Andrea Salinas's town hall at the high school, and thank you to Council Hillier for being there. And we had a decent turnout. Most of the questions were about undocumented workers, the environment, and people really wanting to know what they can do. And the big message I got from her was that your voice does matter. So when you write to your congressperson or the senator that, or do these things, that they really do get noticed. I don't know if they change everything, but they're at least, you know, they're saying something, and she said they are important.
It was a rare light week, or two weeks for me. Had the WEA, had their Meet the Mayor's event over at Pearlau. They were scared that attendance was trending low by a whole bunch of people registered later, and over 110 people there at Pearlau. It's hard to fill up the Pearlau Oratorium, and it was full. So I enjoyed doing that. Most of the time I've been doing the last two weeks is talking with our legislators and emailing about the transportation package. Today was about the TLT, emailing Senator Wagner and the members of the Finance Committee in the Senate urging their support of the TLT bill. Texts from Representative Walters with transportation. So there's, you know, there's only two weeks left, so it's crunch time for them. But appreciate them reaching out and getting the input from, you know, from our level of what is important, what should be done in these last few weeks of the session. With that, anything else? Right? I'll go ahead and adjourn the work session, and we'll come back and start the city council meeting at 7 o'clock.